I call this meeting to order. This is a regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Tuesday, May 27th, 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there were a couple of things in our table file.
Well, actually more than a couple. And if you'll take a look at the personnel items, in terms of the table file, you're going to see that there are literally three pages of personnel items, including appointments, increases, decreases, and changes in assignment, as well as leaves of absence, resignations, retirements. We also have an additional tentative high school overnight trip, and information about closed negotiation session for immediately following our June 9th meeting, and also a modification of the minutes for the May 12th meeting with an addition.
All right. Very good. If there's no objection, we will add these to the agenda as we move forward. All right. We are ready to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the school district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? I would ask that you do so from the podium, and you state your name, address, group that you represent, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Three minutes? I was told thirty, so...
We tried to negotiate, but it's three.
Well, I speak to you tonight as my name is Bruce McWilliams, and I am a graduate of Northfield High School from 1980. And I am a graduate of St. Olaf College. I am myself a music educator. I've been teaching in the Minneapolis area early in my career. I taught in the Chicago area for about a half dozen years. I taught in Salt Lake City, and then finally in Baltimore was where I most recently taught. I've taught in public schools and private schools. I've been the singular head of a band program, and I've also been part of a band team. And so I speak tonight, as you might have anticipated or heard, that I'm going to talk about what I understand as some of the considerations you have tonight for instrumental music in your district. And I am a graduate of the program from a standpoint of having been an active band member, and also a singer in the concert choir and in the Madribles. I can still remember the lovely outfit that Mr. Kittle used to put me in, and had baggy pants and some other things that I don't know how I had the courage, but there's yearbook evidence somewhere of it. And I was also an active member of our orchestra program, which at that time was led by Mrs. Ochidall, who is still in the orchestra business, I understand, and how wonderful that is. And Mr. Stratton, I'm sorry, but I remember when I was a district, the school board rep from the student council, that I remember seeing your service many years ago, and it's amazing to see you here still, and what a tribute to you and to the Northfield community that you are still giving of yourself for this important...
Move on, you got three minutes.
Well, I'm not going to question anybody's motivation or say that some people are right or some are wrong. I'm going to say that my experience as a music educator, specifically as a band director, is that good music programs in good schools come from teachers who work harmoniously together and supportively as they work in a really highly specialized part of the school day and in areas that are oftentimes not understood well by other people as far as what it takes to make a program go and be successful. I am happy to hear that there's a vital music program in Northfield still, and it still includes band and choir and orchestra, and that there is growth specifically, apparently, that you are hoping to address tonight in the orchestra program. And here, here, there are talented people in that program, of course, it's growing. I would hope that you would find time in your meeting tonight to consider this item carefully and table it for discussion later, and to think about some of the ramifications and get more information, because I think from my experience, the solution that is being offered, there may be other ways, or there probably would be ways that are more beneficial to your music program as a whole. And that my experience has been that when you make cuts, that it always has a negative effect. And what you think you'll gain mathematically, you'll lose in terms of people's spirit and their desire to do well, and you'll learn, you'll lose interaction with students, with their teachers, and things like that. So my advice would be tonight, table this when you get to the point of the meeting, gather more information, and hopefully vote in support of orchestra, in support of band, in support of choir, but not at the expense of any of those three. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board? All right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting, which is on May 12th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
With that addition.
With that addition, yes. There's an addition in your table file with an additional announcement that was missing from you, the one that was in your packet, so.
So moved.
Moved by Julie.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are ready for announcements and recognition.
Okay. And we have just a couple of announcements this evening. And excuse my voice, if you notice I've got my pile of cough drops. We had a little epidemic in the district office over the last week or so of credit various kinds and descriptions, mainly of the upper respiratory version. And most of us are getting over it, but it has been slow. So I'm going to do this, and then I'm going to suck on this cough drop until it's time to talk again, so I got a little time to do that. We'd like to recognize this year that Wings, the Women in Northfield Giving Support, granted a one-time $10,000 award to a local nonprofit with the most compelling dream to help women and children in the Northfield area reach their full potential. The Wings inaugural Dare to Dream recipient is the Greenvale Park Elementary Community Schools effort. This collaboration is an effort of a number of local nonprofit organizations, community partners, and local schools. Wings funding will help with the startup cost of this effort, including initial programming, offerings, and funding, a coordinator to help schedule partners' times, coordinate activities, and develop systems to support families. And what I would also say to you is, stay tuned, because I think there will be another announcement on community schools probably at our next board meeting. I received a letter today, but it is written in grant speak, and so I need to get a translator first, and then I will be able to share with you exactly what the detail is. The data and I had a disagreement as to whether it was, you might have won, or you actually did win. So I think it looks positive, but we'll have that report for next time. And then also, I'd just like to recognize our high school young artists. We had the Young Sculptors Public Sculpture presentation on Friday, May 16th, in front of the Northfield Carnegie Library. The new sculpture is entitled "Octopus Garden", made of handmade of glass form, steel and concrete. It's located at the corner of Third and Division, and it will be in place for the entire year. And also across the way at the Arts Guild, they also have a presentation of young artists' work, and some pretty phenomenal stuff in terms of the quality of, I believe we had, and I'm looking for Joel, he's hiding there probably behind the screen, twelve, is that correct, Joel?
Yes.
Twelve young artists who have been involved with that, along with individuals from Carlton, and artist Rick Swear, who's the local glass artist that helped with the octopus garden. So again, we'd really like to congratulate our young artists who have been involved in the octopus garden sculpture, as well as the artists who are on display at the Arts Guild. And I believe that is all the announcements we have for today.
Other announcements or recognition? So many things going on that we're just silent now. All right. We are ready to move on to our first item, which is the One-to-One iPad Initiative Survey. And I believe Mr. Cudre has got a cadre of presenters, maybe?
Yes, it's posse. No.
Nice. So before we start, I'm going to just say a quick thank you. The survey was monstrous. It was far bigger than anything we've done before. It caused me a few sleepy nights, or sleepless nights, but the kids behind me and their classmates basically did an amazing job. Also, it involved all the language arts teachers from grade six through twelve in El Paso, I want to point that out. And we hit the exact wrong time of year to bother them. It's the heart of MCA's field trips, early out for sports, and they really came through for us, and I appreciate that. Also, thank you to the board and Mr. Hillman for this really unique valuable opportunity. And I appreciate the ability to do this for you all. And I'll turn it over to my students, and they'll tell you what they need to tell you. So this, I have to tell anybody. Oh, you know what? I got to introduce these folks. I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you the data. So down here is Millie Chaden. There's Elizabeth Pritchard is right behind me, Mary Wells. We've got Cassidy Nord right here, she's not interested. James Rowley, and Eric Swanson, Emily Swanson, Emily Alberto, and Eric Monzager. Emily and Eric are juniors, the rest are all seniors, and you'll see them again Sunday.
Well, our purpose in the three surveys was to measure the district goal of substitution, and we also decided to take a look at distractions, and also the return on the investment, and people's general satisfaction with iPads. We went through a process of three different surveys, looking at asking teachers, parents, and students what they all thought of the iPads. We're presenting the results of these three surveys, along with our recommendations to the school board, so that you can have quality information to work off of in making decisions regarding future iPad plans. For parents, we specifically asked teachers about how beneficial the iPads were in a home environment, and we looked at the visible effects that the iPads had on their children, whether it be negative things such as games or positive things such as grades. And we also asked about Wi-Fi issues. For students, we specifically asked about accessibility, distractions, and substitutions. And for teachers, we also asked about substitutions, such as assignments, textbooks, or quizzes and tests, and also distractions and Wi-Fi issues. For parents, we asked with a variety of days and times, so that we get a representative sample, because if we only asked during, called during the school day, we would be missing out on parents who work during the day. And for students, we specifically surveyed them during their language arts class, because they all have a language arts class. And for teachers, we tried, or we all tried at different times and days to go up to each teacher to ask them to take the survey. And we asked them...
Oh, this is top secret, so we're not allowed to... That's why it goes to me.
I would like to point out that the artwork on this slide is done by Louisa Lawler, one of our classmates.
All right. And how we surveyed the parents is we each received 56 numbers on a list in two columns, and I chose six random numbers using a calculator, and called each of those numbers until I received three responses. And I called them during my class time, and then also after school when I get home, and then also after dinner. And if we didn't receive response for those three calls, then we'd recalculate a new list of six numbers and try again using the calculator.
Okay, so we can't survey everyone. That'd be too time-consuming and pretty expensive. So instead, we generated a sample, and the sample may not be representative of an entire population. Unpredicted biases could influence it, like, for example, seniors who list themselves as their own emergency contacts could not be included. So this is where confidence interval comes in. Our confidence intervals, we use a 95% confidence. So the confidence intervals show a range where the actual value, if the entire population would survey it, or if the entire population was surveyed would fall. So if, how do you look at this? Okay, so if you look at this one right here, or the green chunk, that's the iPad access that the parents answered. So if we surveyed the entire parent body, the actual value of Wi-Fi access via iPad would be between 91 and 98%.
Now, the first two questions we asked of the teacher were of, sorry, asked of the parents, I should say, were of whether students had access to Internet at home. First question was whether students had access to Internet at home with an iPad, and 95% of parents responded yes, their students do have access to Internet. 92% of parents responded that their students had access to Internet at home through a home computer. The next set of questions was whether parents thought they had saved money this year on school supplies. And 42%, 43% more closely, parents said that they, yes, had saved money this year on school supplies, and 60% of parents believe that they would save money on the future school supplies. Now, these are just ranges of numbers, because with our confidence interval, we had to survey a population, and we were left with a margin of error of almost 8%, which means the 61% of parents who would save in the future varies more closely between plus or minus 8% or to that range. And the third set of questions was whether students were impacted by the iPads. 72% of parents said that yes, their students were positively impacted educationally by the iPads, and 64% of parents said that yes, their students were positively affected organizationally by the iPads.
The last question we had was, do you have any additional comments you'd like to share, and open-ended? So out of the comments, you see how many people felt, or had positive, negative, neutral comments. Out of the positive comments, 24 felt it had a dramatically improved their students' education, and eight hoped to see more use in the future, and were glad it finally happened. Out of the negative comments, 18 parents wished that the iPad was easier to use, and they also wished it was easier for them to control their students' usage, or at least monitor it better. 14 people commented on distractions and gaming that happens both at home and at school, and seven of the parents thought it made learning harder for their students. And out of the neutral comments, four noted organization issues, both to the students and with some of the teachers. Three people thought they're all right, but thought they were just kind of unnecessary, and two people felt that the internet connection wasn't available enough.
The second survey that we did was the student survey, and again, Louisa Lawler did this artwork for us. Teachers emailed Mr. Cudre the number of students in each of their language arts class, and then we responded to those emails with a randomly generated list of numbers, dependent on how many students were in their list. So if we generated, for this class size of 10, if we generated numbers two and seven, then the teacher would have the students scan the QR code with their iPad, and it would take them to a survey that looks like this.
Okay. And then I worked strictly with, like, I just condensed and gathered all of the number data, so sorry if I bore you with too many numbers. Okay, so then, the first thing that I did was, how many? We asked the students how many of them have Wi-Fi, either at home through a computer or through their iPad. And then we found that 94% of the students had access to Internet at home through their iPad, while 88% had access at home through a computer. And then for the use of schoolwork, so we asked them, you know, as you can see right, you know, there. So in a typical school week, how many days per week do you use your iPad for schoolwork at school? And then we found that 83% of them use them every day during a regular school week. And then, how many of them, on the contrary, use them for schoolwork at home? We found that 79% of them use them three, four, and five days. We just condensed this group right here. And then for the effect of the iPad, we asked them how it impacted their organization and their overall educational impact, and then we found that 70% of students felt that the iPads had made for positive organization for schoolwork, while 40, sorry, 48% feel that made a positive educational impact. And then for engagement in class, which will later lead into like games and gaming policy, that we'll touch on a little bit later, we found that people, that 75% of students felt that they were more or just as likely to be engaged in class since the iPad. So those are shown right here. And then for distraction in class, we found that 41% of students felt that they frequently or sometimes, right here, feel that they are often distracted and not on topic by misuse of theirselves, of themselves. And then we found that 51% of students feel that they are distracted by others' misuse of the iPad. And then for non-school-related apps, we asked them, when using your iPad in school, how often do you use non-related school apps? Non-school-related apps. And then we found that 76% of students sometimes or frequently use non-school-related apps in school, whether it's in class, or they're not on topic, or whatever it is. And then for gaming policy, which again, kind of relates back to the last one, we asked them if they feel they should be more strict, less strict, or the current practice is just fine. And we found that 52% of students feel that the gaming policy could be more strict, or more specifically, more strict for those who are very easily distracted. So just combine those two right there.
All right. As part of our measuring substitution, we asked this about the textbooks. And so we found out how many students used textbooks, and then out of the textbooks they used, how many were online textbooks? We found a little more than half, or 57% of the textbooks students used were available online. And we also went over the student comments. About 190 roughly total students were supplied, and out of those 190, only 38 left comments. And out of those comments, and the negative ones, two people thought they did like specific things, but admitted overall they did think there were some other benefits with the iPad. One person noted health concerns, such as like getting headaches or like their eyes sort of hurting after long usage. And 13 noted distractions such as gaming in class. Of the neutral comments, five students wanted more access to apps, and three wished there was more instruction, instruction for themselves and the teachers on how to use the iPads.
The final survey that we did was of the teachers, and again, the artwork is done by Louisa Lawler. So each student had a couple teachers, either at the high school or the middle school, to go to with their iPad, either before, during, or after school, to give, to have them scan a QR code like this one to take the survey. And this is what the QR code took them to.
So the total number of population of teachers we were trying to survey was 132, 61 from the middle school, and 71 from the high school. Unfortunately, we could only get 113. For me, when I was going out to try to talk to them, one of my teachers had practice every day after school, so I couldn't go get him because I have a first hour. And again, it's very difficult to complete a census, because they're not always there, and not everyone wants to take it. And also, if we were to create a sample, the sample would need to be less than 10% of the population, and that would be about 13 teachers, so it wouldn't have been very useful. It's shown that teachers are, it's very clear that teachers have access to Wi-Fi at home through computers and their iPads. This graph is asking how often, or it was asking the teachers, how often do you use the following with your students via Schoology or other online methods? Dark green signifies frequently, light green sometimes, orange rarely, and red never. The teachers answered, what, to post assignments, 85% of them use it frequently or sometimes, to send messages, 82%, message students, 65%, collect student work, 45%, and then web-based activities, 57%. This graph shows that the number of teachers feeling that, or felt like the iPad had a positive impact on organization was around the same amount as those who feel there is a negative or no impact. This graph shows that the number of teachers felt that the iPad had a positive impact on organization. Oh, oops. Yeah, this one felt that the iPad had a more negative or neutral impact rather than positive on engagement in class. This one is regarding distractions specifically. 82% of teachers felt that the iPads were a distraction to their classroom, and there were additional comments specific to the distraction and engagement questions. Eight teachers commented that they strongly agree that the iPads were a distraction and wanted stronger rules. There are 17 comments regarding situational, like it depends on the student, or it can occasionally be distracting. There were four comments that said it was not distracting because the teacher does not allow the students to let the iPad be a distraction. Then there's three other just not very relevant ones.
Okay, so we asked the teachers a question regarding game use... Nope. Regarding, the slide disappeared. Okay. So we asked about game usage, and 80% believe that the district needs to be more strict on game usage, because it's becoming a distraction for students. But 80% sounds bad, but the iPads have, on the other hand, been proven to be very useful academically. So we gave the teachers a list of 20 apps that are available on the iPad, distributed by the district, and we had them rank their top five apps most often they use in their classes, so them directing their students to use these apps. And 80% sometimes or consistently use Schoology every day, followed by Notability, Safari, iBook, and Google Drive. The impact of iPads, 80% of teachers, or 50% of teachers, had thought that the iPads were a positive impact on their ability to teach, while less than 15% believe that there was a negative impact. So this is overall very good impact for the teachers and their teaching abilities. So for the open-ended comments that we left teachers to comment on at the end, we got 29 responses out of 112 teachers that were surveyed, five of which were positive, and four teachers were overall happy and grateful for the iPads. One was content for now, but will be happier in the future when more kinks have been worked out. 10 had negative comments, three of which were regarding games and the distraction from those games. Six were commenting on other distractions and misuse regarding the iPads, not necessarily games. One wants more consequences established for misuse, so less students get distracted. 14 teachers had neutral comments, five of which were regarding teacher preparation and consistency of use, highlighting the fact that a lot of teachers use them very consistently while some don't. So it's just kind of a miscommunication for students, and that makes it harder for them. Five brought up suggestions for the teachers regarding iPads. Two of the comments say that we should look at the effect of what the iPads have on struggling students, mostly distraction-wise. And two comments were considered other, because they didn't really fall into a category.
All right. So I'm going back to the three main goals we wanted to assess through these surveys. We found distractions aren't issue.
And that's reflected in three-fourths of the students sometimes or frequently use non-school-related apps.
Which is inflicting teachers, which, because 80% felt they were a distraction for students.
In addition to that, 17 out of 41 of the negative parent comments involve distractions.
And 52% of students said that we should be more... And fifty-two percent of students said that we should be more strict about the use of games.
Students and teachers are both satisfied with the iPads and parents are in general neutral about the iPads, but that's probably just because they didn't receive a free iPad themselves.
Most parent comments.
Was that a statistical comment?
Most parents express concern over their lack of involvement with the iPads. So an idea would just be have um parents get more involved with iPads just because they don't really understand, I guess, what their students are doing with them.
Um, it seems too soon to tell whether um we have returned on financial investments on the iPads, but um um less than half of parents said that they saved money this year, but a lot of them are hopeful to save money in the future.
Teachers felt it was helpful for both their teaching and organization, but not as much for their students.
And very few teachers thought the iPads had a negative effect on their ability to teach.
And seventy percent of students thought the iPads had a positive organizational impact, but only half claimed that they had a positive educational experience. And then with substitution, we should continue to encourage teachers to substitute more in new ways since they mostly use the iPad for posting assignment information and sending documents. So perhaps they could try collecting assignments and then if apps develop, perhaps quizzes as well, although there have been some test security issues, which would be another thing to look into more.
More than half of the textbooks we aim to use are available on the iPads.
And over three-fourths of students reported using iPads for schoolwork at least three days or more at home and in school.
So overall, it seems we need to look into distractions and most people feel neutral or satisfied with the iPads. And substitution went well, but we hope to continue to make more innovative use for the iPads.
That's it? That was our conclusion? If you guys want to stand up, I'm sure everyone I ever questioned will.
Word members questioning?
Eric's comment about the free iPad is not part of our research.
No statistical significance.
Rob?
Hi, uh, thank you very much. That was really interesting and you did a great job of presenting it. I'm just wondering about with the use of the iPads, teachers, there's not a consistent usage of it from teacher to teacher. And I'm wondering if there was any feedback on that aspect of it, that it made it confusing because some teacher uses it in one way and another uses it and there's not a consistent expectation from the teaching.
I think mostly the issue is um that um like students get confused because um some teachers use it a lot and expect a lot, like everything technologically. And some teachers only accept paper homework. So then I think students get confused because maybe, I don't know, there's just like a disconnect and teachers think that there needs to be more like consistent usage, I guess.
Like, for example, from personal experience, I can say, um, I'm used to like ninety percent of my teachers posting like all their assignments in Schoology. And there's like one or two who never would and so occasionally I forget. It's like, oh, it checks Schoology, no, it's awesome, I'm good. And like, oh, crap, there's something, they're like, ah.
And also, the goal for this year was substitution and there's also several more steps to iPad usage. But this year, the primary goal was for each teacher to substitute at least one aspect of their class. So not all teachers did the same thing.
And I think another aspect of um teachers getting on the right, on the same track with each other is not necessarily their fault, but the lack of the offering of textbooks via iPad from companies because some classes, they can't offer it because it's not available. So I think that's what they're talking about too, is not some classes, like half classes have to be real textbooks because that's all that's offered, while others have both or just strictly via the iPad.
Just another thing, just from personal experiences, that I've found that my older teachers like never use any of the iPad. Everything is on paper, but a lot of the younger, newer ones, you know, do. So, I mean, that is something to keep in mind.
Other questions? Julie?
Um, I have a question. First of all, thank you. I think you guys did a great job. And I love to hear your personal stories too about your own, your own experiences as well as what you surveyed. Um, I have a question. Were there any problems or challenges to the survey process that you didn't anticipate? And how did you overcome them?
We're writing out now.
I think Mr. Kudry tried to repair us for the issues of a census, but again, we just did not expect how difficult it would be just to get in touch with all the teachers or to have cooperative teachers in terms of taking the survey. And then with students just being gone all the time for field trips and um different activities and all the rain cancellations and stuff, it was really difficult to get those students in the language arts classes to take the surveys as well.
Something about student surveys is that there's some data that we got, which I don't think was on here, but it was just like really like students, there's a couple students who had never, or they said they never used Schoology during school time, which isn't really possible. So I think some kids didn't take the student survey seriously and might have just jokingly put down incorrect answers.
I did lose a lot of sleep and I shared that with them when that all things started going wrong with the drafting down on teachers and getting the students and stuff, it really became. We, we quite obviously hit the worst time of year to do this. So next period, my notes, it'll say, for Mr. Bolio, who hopes to continue something like this. We're gonna start this earlier because we hit the two weeks when the weather sort of cleared a little bit. So then every sport had makeup games and everybody was gone for, it was, it was insane.
I think we matched it. You are at a plan B, C, D.
They did a great job. When you consider all, they, they had to go to each teacher, they had to go to middle school. And uh, you know, we didn't email ahead and say, I, I gave an email saying, hey, the kids will be around and so on, but not like a specific time. So, you know, sometimes as a senior, maybe two minutes before the bell rings seems like a good idea to approach a teacher with a survey, but it's not. So we had a few of those and just, you know, and a few of where like people would just go there and the teacher was like gone for, because they coached and they were gone after school and the student didn't have, you know, uh, that, the first hour available. So that's why we missed a couple of those, but I, I think overall it went, went pretty well. Um, we did have a couple of really tough phone calls that happened early on. I think we'll just kind of keep, keep it secret, but uh, yeah, it was, it was interesting, I'd say.
Carrie?
Um, I didn't completely understand the confidence um rankings at the beginning. Is the confidence that you had in your results the same for the teachers, the teacher survey and the parent survey and the student survey? Or does it vary question by question? Or can you just explain that a little more to me?
Okay, so um because we couldn't get a census, a lot of the answers were just the results that we got from the survey, but then we were explaining that these maybe are not the set results. They are rather the results from the survey and there's biases that may or may not have been included, so.
So the confidence interval was constant for the student and teacher ones and that's at ninety-five percent. So we're ninety-five percent sure it was somewhere in the margin of error.
Student and parent ones.
Teachers, because it wasn't attempted census, those were the exact percentages. And then parents and students, that was our ninety-five percent confidence, where it could have been in some range of that number we gave you.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt?
I just have to tell you, I'm truly jazzed and excited tonight because I just think it's awesome that we've got kids evaluating this program that we spend a lot of time putting together for kids. So I'm just over the roof excited for you. You did a great job. I had a chance to speak to these guys early on and engage with them about the kinds of questions they were gonna ask. I, I think you did a marvelous job. I think a great piece is that I've been living this all year and listening to people and nothing that you have said shocks, you know, in terms of, these are things that I've heard, you know, face to face and it really kind of triangulates some of the other piece. The question that I have is your ability to do any kind of disaggregation of the data of the middle school versus the high school. And as a person who's gonna be involved with reviewing um some of the policies and procedures that we used this year, what I find really interesting, especially about the gaming data, the eighty percent of people who think we need stricter restrictions, we often hear the solution at the high school, people, what is the solution at the high school? What, are we gonna continue in middle school mode, right? And then eighty percent of people responding to that, that tells me that the middle school teachers, even with middle school mode, believe that there is an issue there as well. So would there be a way, obviously not, but for you to help disaggregate that data and share that with us, looking at the middle school versus the high school?
Well, the student data, the student data actually is automatically disaggregated. All of the distraction pieces were asked of high schoolers only. Yeah. So, and, and, and other than that, yes, um, I have paid my monthly fee for survey monthly fee. And now, all of the things, uh, I, I can share that with you and you could.
I just think that would be very interesting because many people think the solution is middle school mode, yet what that data indicates to me is that even people in middle school mode might think there's an issue there. And so then we get into talking about filtering and as we all know, you've all had some kind of negative aspect with our school filter. So that's just a question of what letters do we press and what other problems do they cause in terms of that piece? So um if we could talk about that, then you did a wonderful job and I think your data is outstanding. You did a great job. Great questions, great techniques, well done.
Oh, and uh, just as a side note, the students generated all the questions. And some of, some of the days, we would sit there and as a full class during fifth period, thirty kids, the screen up and they would have a conversation and I would take notes. And then they pair their questions down and I'd take that to seventh period and they'd work on it further. So all of the, all of the questions came from them. I gave the goals, you know, I, we, I had Matt come in and talk about the SAMR model and what our goal was as a district for the year. And then we kind of took off from there and the themes kind of came about from where the students came from, so.
So I had, I had one more question that um I thought of when Matt was talking was, you were saying that you didn't think there was any surprises for you. I was curious, you all have had your own experiences. Did anything in the data surprise you?
The sheer level of distractions, like I get distracted sometimes, but I don't think that eighty percent felt, I don't know if those teachers or not, but like, I didn't realize how big of a problem it was for other people, so. And I worked on, um, you know, the question of like, are you distracted by your own use versus other students' use? And there was, you know, a much higher percentage that said that, you know, other people who are more distracted. Yeah, exactly. It's not me, it's them. So I thought that that was pretty interesting.
I did a trial run of those two questions with one of my honors geometry course. And there was nobody who said they were distracted themselves. And I believe it was about eighty percent who had been distracted by others, which I thought was shocking. That was, that's not any data that you should throw into the mentions, was like, whoa, that's kind of like surprising, so.
They were distracted by others or they thought others were being distracted?
They were distracted by others' use. You know, like if they saw someone was off task, you know, in a class of thirty, if you've got the one person in the right spot that's off task and happens to be able to see it, but, you know, if, I, my personal opinion on that is there's some staff development that could happen that where people could, you know, surround that problem together and then you can find out what are the difficulties and come back from lots of it.
So when you work with, with development of the questions, how do you process so that words like distraction have a clear enough definition that you're going to get, you're going to get an answer that really reflects, you know? I mean, for one person, distraction might be, it's driving me crazy and I can't do anything. For somebody else, it's, well, yeah, I see, he's over there playing a game, but I'm doing my thing. Do you struggle at all at times with trying to create the actual questions?
We did that perfectly and I think that's one of the things, you know, we're, we're uh, as amazing as, as these two groups are, I really do believe that they're great people. And they've worked hard all year. Uh, the fact is, we're high school students and I'm not as, you know, I don't have a, a master's in uh,
Psychometrics.
or anything like that. That, that will be like part of the next step, that it would be a good follow-up. We actually have some resources um in our department to have relatives who've worked in that field. Actually, Mr. Eddie's sister, I believe it is, works for a company and her job is to do exactly what you just described for a large company. So I think that will be part of what we need to do. We did, I, I tested on a few of my classes and a few other classes. And the main thing we looked for were, you know, with these guys, is it obviously biased? And we really worked at that part of trying not to push them to it was the answer. But as far as the semantics that you're talking about, um, we didn't, we didn't get too far into that. You know, outside of when I gave them, if kids, uh, the kids in my classes that I gave them to, if, for the samples, if they were confused by the questions that I threw back at these guys, we rewrote them that way.
So I guess finally, uh, for you guys, positive experience? Something that you think is gonna be usable outside of the experience of doing this class? Mr. Kudry, you wanna cover yours?
I'm all over here.
Uh, just thoughts and feelings? Because obviously we've been doing this now for several years with, with several different projects. Personally, I think it's a very powerful piece. I just wonder, how, how are you guys feeling about this? Is this something that, that you could see a use for outside of your experience you had in school?
Um, well, I know for me personally, um, it's really like positively affected my organization, I just saw the data. But um, I've also noticed that um I completely lost my train of thought. Okay, it was, um, so like online, you know, I mean, I'm a seventeen-year-old senior in high school. I mean, I do sometimes, sometimes wait until the night before something's due. So like for my psych journals, you know, the textbooks online, which I found really, I really liked that it was online. But um, it would sometimes like lock you out of the thing and then you can't log on and it says like, you know, um, something like log back in twenty-four hours. And I'm like, well, I don't have twenty-four hours. And I talked to Mr. Helman about this when he came into our class and then he said that it was something probably more with the textbook company. Um, that something was just amiss there, but that was something that was rather frustrating. But again, part of it is my fault for waiting. Okay, so for me, it was very, very, very positive. I love the iPads. It like, I could keep all my homework on there, all my planners, just everything. And I could cruise the web when I got home. Um, and on top of that, the apps that the school buys, like Notability, when we return the iPad, they're still on our account. So next year when I go to college, well, I'm not going to college next year, I'm being an exchange student. But the year after that, when I go to college, um, I'll have Notability. So if I do decide to get an iPad over a laptop, I'll be able to take notes on Notability instead of having to sort through something else.
I actually have a varying experience with these iPads. My sister was not, I haven't heard her say something negative about this, but it's been an extreme distraction for me this year. And I'm not a very organized person and it's been hard to keep myself in several places at once, whether it be in a planner that I don't check often or Notability or Schoology that I don't check often. It was harder, I feel, by having the iPads that stretched me out at this point to. It took the already hard workload I had and it became a distraction as well as a confusing thing, the iPads. And then something I would like to address with the keyboards on the iPads. I know many students I've seen with Bluetooth keyboards that are rather expensive, but we'll streamline the iPads a lot. But I've always found it easier to write than use the keyboards that come on the surface of the iPad. And it's just been, just one more little issue that tweaks me about the iPads.
Um, just to piggyback on Eric, like with the other extras, like the styluses and the keyboards and um like the wireless, um, you know, mice, most, mice that come with it. I don't know if it's different for computers, but anyway. So I found that, that like mainly like the students that can afford those extra things have really positively, you know, benefited from it, but like, I mean, well, I know like for me, like I was gonna buy a stylus, but then I found out and it was, I mean, it was only fifteen bucks. But I'm like, I'm not spending fifteen bucks on a stylus, you know? And then, um, so I mean, I just didn't get one. And I mean, like, it's fine, but it, you know, it just would have helped if like those extra things, you know, you know what I mean? Where that does kind of like negatively hit the kids. Where that does kind of like negatively hit the kids that can't necessarily afford all of those other things.
I understood your question as what my thoughts on this process was, and...
Elizabeth, you got to the question I was looking for. Is, did the process that you went through, in terms of your statistics class, doing a project like this in comparison to reading in your textbook about how people use statistics to solve problems? What do you see as the impact of using this process as opposed to a more traditional instruction?
Um, don't get me wrong, Mr. Kudry, your lessons were very invigorating all year, but I thought that this whole process of doing like student to parent to teacher to other student contact was really insightful, I guess. And it really, everything was group work, pretty much. Ninety-five percent of it was group work. So, I know in college, a lot of projects are group projects. So it really taught me how to communicate with my group. And like not, like, obviously, I love all these people and everything, but they're not my best friends. So it had, it taught me to really like communicate with people that I'm not especially close with. And especially, Google Drive was really helpful, because everything, all of our stuff was in one place, and you could see everything that everyone was doing. So, that was really helpful. And yeah, so group work, I learned how to do that, which will be very helpful for me in the future at college next year. So, and I thought it was just an overall good, fun thing to do, rather than just do assignments in class, because we all got to work together, and there's a lot of really like fun discussions, like you wouldn't think they were fun if we just wrote it down on paper what we were doing. Excuse me, what we were doing. But, I don't know, we just like fed off of each other's ideas, and it made us like, it made me feel like we were all like a really smart group of people. And I don't know, it was, it was fun, and we got the results we wanted, and it was a good process.
I think you are a really smart group of people.
That was a long explanation, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to quick add to that. I actually had a conversation with one of my friends who was in AP Calc and AP Stats last year, and I was telling her what we were doing, and she was actually quite jealous, because she was like, wow, that sounds like an awesome opportunity. And it really was, in terms of using the iPad, and I finally mastered Survey Monkey, and again, Google Drive and everything. But it also felt like a comprehensive learning experience, because, I mean, calling parents during class, that was a terrifying experience and a learning experience. And actually, I ended up calling some Spanish-speaking households back, and so I even felt like I was using other knowledge from other classes. So, that's something that, sometimes in high school, you feel like some of your learning can be pointless, and how I'm going to apply this to real life. But I felt like I was going to class, and I was actually participating in real life, so.
Yes, I, you know, appreciate how this class has helped reinforce what we've learned in this class and through other classes by doing the survey. It's brought stuff together and made a big picture view of what we've been learning.
I wanted to make a comment, sort of going back to the question about your personal experience with the iPad. Overall, thought it was good for me to have an iPad. But I will admit, I have occasionally used internet-based games in classes. But a comment on that is like, usually if I did that, it's because it was already zoning the outdoor board anyway, so if I had been gaming, I wouldn't have been paying much attention. And also, just in general, I think you'll continue to find like more loopholes students can find, for example, like, even on middle school mode, you can revert on like, at sesamestrait.com. And I think there's like ways like downloading Pokemon and stuff. So, there will be issues that people continue to use.
Addressing the Spanish-speaking part of that, we have several Spanish-speaking homes in our district, so to include them in the survey, we had a script written by Anna McWilliams in Spanish. So when we called someone who was a Spanish-speaking, from a Spanish-speaking home, we just said, you know, I'll blow us the new hole, and like, explain that, and then had some week.
She gave us a script that said what to say if we didn't know Spanish.
Yeah, exactly. And then had Anna, had Anna, one of the people who are really good at Spanish call them back. So that's cool.
This class has kind of changed the way how I view any data I see, like, on the media or anything. Just with, because you know, you are given data by someone, so you take it at face value. But through this class, I've learned the nuances of how data is collected, and what to look for to know how it's collected, and what information you're actually getting. So it's changed how I see data whenever I get any.
Again, just to go off, just to go off what Emily said, I mean, I'm someone who are very like involved in politics, and I'm very, you know, just intrigued with the whole political realm of everything. And so, you know, in politics, there's all these, you know, charts and statistics of, you know, whatever, to support whatever side. And it's just really taught me to look at those charts a lot more critically, and to, you know, dig into what, you know, like where they're getting this data and all this stuff, you know. And actually, Elizabeth and I just did a research paper on, both drones, but that's kind of irrelevant. And then one of those things, we had to look at charts, you know, of all, you know, different, you know, casualties, whatever. And we were able to like, you know, identify, you know, all the differences, and just, you know, pick it out for...
Think more critically.
Well, this is just terrific. And I think the amount of data that you presented to us, and the short amount of time, and the enthusiasm, it was terrific. And I think we'll inform our policies and work on the iPads, too, so, thank you.
Thanks so much.
These guys all get studying, so I miss them.
Did they just get A's on this class, though, right?
They do. Yeah. It was a bad example.
I read a quote recently from Woody Allen that said sixty-six percent of all statistics are made up at the moment, including that one.
All right, we are ready for our next item, which is the D-PAC goals for 2014-2015. Kyle is here to share those with us.
I had them all queued up, and now they're gone, so just give them to me.
I just want to say, I agree that was outstanding.
Just give them one second, please. Sorry. Mary Hansen, I've never let you down, and here I go.
Kyle, can you tell us what MTSS stands for?
Multi-tiered Systems Support.
Yeah, I was going to look it up before I got here and I...
In the third section in the first goal, it is spelled out, but...
Oh, is it? I missed it.
It's proposing that you have a formal system of interventions that will happen, depending on what piece of your education is missing. But I think you guys know. Are we going to do the definition of D-PAC? I could do that without the slides.
Go, go for it.
Go for it.
D-PAC is a committee that sets goals for the school district for a particular year. It has administrators, community members, and teachers in it. It is divided into three subcommittees: assessment, student services, and curriculum. And each subgroup meets in, I believe, six meetings over the course of the year to set goals in each area for the school district to work on in the following year. The school board is also as members on the committees.
There we are.
Which means we can skip a few of these. Teaching and learning, I said curriculum. It's been referred to us either. So, here we are. Assessment. The assessment subcommittee decided that this year we will partner with community agencies that serve students by providing meaningful data support, emphasizing key transitions young people make on the cradle-to-career continuum. Secondly, students, teachers, and parents will collaborate to implement and evaluate holistic strategies leading to individual student growth. The subcommittee I'm on, teaching and learning, decided that the district will provide curricular and staff development support in the implementation of the TAVI initiative, continuation of the SAMR model that began basically two years ago. And we tack down to the end, and it'll be integrated into the best practices of instruction, to make sure people are, or teachers are using the iPads with the curriculum in mind. Secondly, the district will develop continuous, accurate, and separate measurements of each student's progress towards academic mastery, work habits, and behavioral standards. Student Services Subcommittee shows the district will refine and implement the MTSS model, tiered systems of support for academic behavior and social-emotional learning. The district will investigate systems and services that will provide a coordinated, comprehensive approach to children's mental health within the MTSS model. The district will enhance engagement through school connectedness that promotes mutual respect and responsibility with students, families, and staff. Special thanks to two retirees we had, Dr. Terry Lewis and Dr. Richard Denny. I thought that they were both excellent at leading their committees, and in two very different ways, they showed deeply that they cared how their students were doing in their district. Thank you.
Julie?
Thanks, Kyle. And I'm trying to think, there's multiple years you've been doing this, and you continue to step up, and it's really appreciated. How many years is that?
Two, four, or five, I was trying to think.
I knew it was multiple, so thank you. I'm glad that you were a part of the teaching and learning, because I did have a question based on last year, when you addressed the studying of standards, standards-based grading at the secondary level. And I noticed that it didn't make it into the goals this year, and I'm just wondering, I know that, having been a school board liaison member, I do really appreciate and miss the rich discussion and the challenge of coming up with these. So I understand, but I was wanting to have you delve in a little bit further to that standards-based grading at the secondary level, and why it didn't make the shift goals.
Sure. It was reported to us that the standards-based grading was not being successfully adopted as quickly as hoped at the high school level. And we did not want to drop it as a committee. So, a large part of that goal is restating that, that goal, and including behavior and third part, behavior and social emotional learning, as separate categories, saying that we'd like all three to be measured. The standards-based grading is basically trying to say that you have to actively measure what knowledge each student has, separate from other things that you're measuring from them. So, the goal that we had was intended to say that and what we said last year, and all.
Okay, exactly, I understand. Yeah, thank you.
And we didn't use any acronyms.
And I think as we've found over the years, sometimes when we pick up on a concept that has national recognition or has a name recognition, sometimes that's accepted cheerfully, and sometimes it's, well, that belongs to some group. And so I think, as the district worked with the piece, they tried to say, well, what would we want in the best-of-students-based grading? Well, we'd want the kind of measures that are continuous, accurate, and separate. But it didn't want to use the term standards-based grading, because it had some negative connotations for some people, as they tried to think about how they would implement it.
It always surprised me as a parent that people would have a problem with it, because it's not saying you shouldn't do anything that you weren't doing previously, it's just saying that you need to keep track of them separately, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. No, I understand that now, it makes a lot of sense.
Other questions? Matt?
I don't know if you can address this, but one of the things that struck me with being part of the discussions on student services is, when you have a goal like, the district will enhance engagement through school connectedness that promotes mutual respect, et cetera, that last one. I mean, that seems like a basic thing that should not just be this year's goal, but always a goal. And my question is, when do these things rise to the point of being part of the school's strategic plan, or part of the school's mission statement, rather than just a yearly goal?
And the reality is, this goal with some massaging has been in place for a decade. It was one of the first things that, when I came to the district and we were really thinking about what D-PAC wanted to do, the Student Services Committee said, we're not going to get anywhere if we can't help connect kids to adults in the community and in our schools. And I really think at this point, I would agree with you, it almost has become, it's like, well, what other goals are we going to do, and then we're going to do the connection to this goal. But I think at the same time, it's, there's some sense that there's a continuing need to reinforce this piece, and to think about ways to stretch it. Which, in the Student Services side, this is their stretch that ties to the assessment side of the cradle-to-career. Because their sense is, part of what we're measuring with Northfield Promise is, we're looking for student engagement, we're looking for how kids are engaged in, in school life and whatever. And so, I think there's a desire to want to support that Northfield Promise goal, not only in the assessment arena, but also in the Student Services arena. But I would agree with you. I mean, I was gonna, that would be the trick question for tonight, is, which goal of the ones that are here has been on the D-PAC goals for ten years? And that's it.
Does that imply that connectedness is not yet where you'd like it to be?
Yes, that's exactly what it implies. We still aren't at a point where I could say to you, a hundred percent of our kids have a connection to school through caring adults all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I really appreciate this. And what I'm excited about is that so many of the Northfield Promise benchmarks seem flexing, like, everything's coming together, in terms of the community and what the district goals will be for next year. So, that's great. Thanks, Kyle. All right, our next item is FOW, presenting the 2014-2015 General Fund Budget. So, lots of data again, right?
I know, I almost, the girl that said, oh, I'm sorry if I bore you with the numbers, I almost picked it, and said, no, that's my job. I got that nailed down. So, the general fund, obviously, I've been here the last couple meetings, going over all the budgets, and this is always the big one. Just as a reminder, I was here in January and presented the financial forecast, the five-year forecast, and we really use that kind of as a base for the general fund budget, as a starting point, and then add anything that's known changes, and that sort of thing, and make assumptions based on the data we have currently. But as you're aware, you know, the legislative session just ended, and they're still analyzing things, and we've got contracts that aren't settled, so it's always moving pieces. But the state requires us to adopt a budget by June 30th, so here I am, with the rest of my knowledge. For revenue assumptions, the really big change for the general education aid, which does make up seventy percent of our revenue budget, so it's pretty important that we get that right, was really the shift for all-day kindergarten. They switched the change in pupil unit calculation, which I'll talk about in another slide or so, and really increased the formula to account for that. But that was one of the bigger changes. It looks like we got a really large increase in revenue, but a lot that was really just a change in the way that they're calculating the pupil units. So, just keep that in mind. But we did get an increase in funding, which will help offset some of the additional staffing and costs to set up the rooms. But as we did have an all-day program, we actually will have pretty limited increase in costs compared to summer districts. The enrollment, I did hold flat, so the same enrollment. The use on the January forecast is exactly what I used for this, to keep it as consistent as possible. There's no major changes that we're aware of at this time, so we're going to use the same enrollment. And then when I frame the revised budget, when we have more final numbers, we'll, we'll get that fine-tuned for you, so. The federal sequestration, we are still seeing the effects of that. Our title funding was sequestered 13% last year and another 7% this year. And it's actually a little more than that because we did have some Title II carryover that we used this year to help offset that, so we're really seeing a big hit with our title funding. Our special ed federal funding is not seeing quite the same, but overall that did go down. Our federal funding went down for the sequestration. Our levy is a known source, we certified in December. Just a reminder, it was a slight decrease, very, very small, so that's a pretty consistent source of revenue. And between the general education aid and the levy, that makes up 93% of our revenue. The other pieces are really, really small in comparison, so. The local sources is the activity fees and miscellaneous revenue, really not anticipating any major changes with that. And then the other considerations we had, special education, there is a new revenue that we're going to see next year called the cross subsidy reduction aid. So there will be a slight increase in special education revenue for that, as well as some tuition billing increase revenue, which I'll talk about when I get to the expenditures. And then the general ed aid, they also increased $25 per pupil unit, which I forgot to talk about. It was kind of unusual for them to do any kind of funding increase in the second year of the biennium, but they did do, they settled on $25 in addition to what they did for the all-day K in the last session. And then they also did a one-time funding to help offset the cost of implementing the teacher evaluation. And that will be $302 per FTE. So we're anticipating between 70 and 80,000 roughly for that as a one-time source of funding. So average daily membership, you can see the 13, 14 weightings that they've had for the last however many years, and what the new weightings will be going forward. Very simplified, 1.0, specifically the increase for kindergarten is where the big jump is coming, but really they were trying to simplify it. So this is the same exact chart that you saw in January. For 2013-14, for this school year, our weighted membership, which is our ADM times those weightings, was 4424. If you take that same exact ADM and multiply it by the new weightings, you're going to get 4165. This is on here strictly for comparative purposes. The 4174 is the enrollment I'm using for this current budget. But I didn't want you to think we were losing 300 students, that's not the case, it's just the weighting changes. As you can see, we're actually projecting a small increase in enrollment, so. And then you can see what we're planning based on the projection model. For expenditure assumptions, salaries, we are looking at about a 5.4% increase. And it's a combination of our settled agreement with the Northville Education Association, as well as we're currently in negotiation with our other 15 contracts, which are unknowns at this time. And salaries and benefits make up 80% of our budget, so that's a big, a big chunk to have unknown. The benefits will be increasing aggregate increase of 3.4. Some of that, there is going to be a half a percent increase in TRA and a half a percent increase, or no, 0.25% increase in PARA. The PARA increase has been effective till January 1st, so it's only for half the school year, but those are state mandated, so we don't have a choice in that. We do have a 4% increase in the district contribution for health insurance. All the, all the contracts are tied to the teachers, and the teachers have a 4% increase in there, so that'll go across the board for everyone. And utilities, typically the way the budget has worked for anything that's not salary-related, we've just kind of applied a blanket percentage, and it's been 2% for the last couple of years. The utilities really hasn't been keeping up, so we're, I'm kind of just doing a market adjustment to get them up to where they're at now. Special education saw a significant increase, we had a couple of students that are in like an inpatient facility, which is a significant cost, but we also will see a small increase in our tuition revenue, which is what I was talking about on the revenue slide. And the special assessments, we do have a $15,000 assessment for some work they're doing on, from the city for Sidley, repairing one of the, one of the roads over there, which I hear is much needed, but I don't know. And then the non-salary and other operational, I only did at 1% this year, just because we're getting closer to that, you know, spending down, and so instead of the 2%, I'm trying to keep it a little more conservative and keep things as positive as long as we can, so. And then just a reminder, I'm sure you're all well aware that the goal is 16%, but just to have that on there as well. So when I put all of that together, the estimated revenue is about 43.8 million, and our estimated expenditures are about 44.2. So we are looking to spend down about 340,000 of our fund balance, which is better than what I forecasted in January, which is always the direction I would like to be in. I believe the forecast had about a $750,000 or $780,000 spend down, so doing a little better, mostly on the expenditure side, that there was some additional revenue that we hadn't anticipated in January, so. So overall, the aggregate revenue is increasing 5.45, and the expenditures are increasing about 6% across the board in total. All right, and I did, you should have a blown-up copy of this, because I know it's really hard to see. So there's just a couple of items that I wanted to point out, just because I thought they might generate some questions. But you can see the 43.8 and 44.2 in the spend down. On the expenditure side, one thing I'd like to point out is the increase in the district support services. This is partially due to the new tech director position. Some of that was already the savings we saw from the reorganization, so that's not all of it. The bulk of it is actually because of a coding change that the state's requiring. We do have some technology salaries that are quoted to capital in our capital budget, and they're still coded there, still paid out of capital. But the, the state's just requiring that we classify them differently, basically, so they're just moving out of the sites and buildings lined up to the district support. So it's not a new cost, it's just shifting where it was on the chart, basically. So I just wanted to point that out. And then again, the special education increase is primarily due to some increased costs for the students, as well as some just reorganization of the changes with the Director of Special Ed and getting all those pieces in the right buckets, so. So that's, that's really it on the expenditures. As far as the fund balance, you can see we're still projecting to end at about 20%, which is above the board goal of 16. We are looking to spend down the unreserved about 500,000 or so, because the restricted is offsetting that. So I just wanted to point that out, it's not a straight 338 down on the unrestricted because of the, the change with the health and safety fund balance, which I talked about at the last meeting. And then this, I just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot picture view of our fund balance history. I think this really shows quite easily the stewardship that the district has shown. You know, we were way down in a bad situation, and we've increased our fund balance, our unrestricted fund balance every year for the last nine years, which is really impressive when you consider the fact that salaries always increase and benefits will likely always increase. And the state hasn't kept up with inflation in 10 or more years, so. I just think it's a really key snapshot for you guys to see. And you can see there's not a huge gap between where the board has set the goal and where we're at. And for several years now, we've said 15, 16 is really the year that's going to require some adjustment for the budget, but I think it shows a strength. And I think that's about it. Project, you know, better than projected, which is always good. But I think that's all I got. So do you have any specific questions on any of that? John?
No, I guess what catches my eye is in this is the decrease in the
Yep.
688,000, 687,000 and change in revenue, federal sources. If that had just held flat as opposed to declining every year, that we wouldn't be looking at the engine to the fund balance.
Yep. And the, the one thing I will point out is I think in the 11, 12 year is when we had that influx of the ARRA funding. So we did see a significant increase in our federal funding to kind of offset the fact that the state wasn't in. So I think if I had even more years, it, it might look like we had an uptick, but we're still seeing sequestration. No, no way around that, so.
Really no indication at this point that it's not going to continue as an additional percentage reduction every single year?
And the, the increase in, in state revenue is primarily due to the addition of all-day kindergarten or?
The 1.5% per year in this last biennium.
And then the additional $25 per student that they just
Three million dollars or $2 million down, at least.
Lots of all-day K.
Yeah, the bulk of it is the all-day K. I would say, when I ran the numbers, because the, last year, the, the basic revenue formula was 5302 per, per pupil unit, and it's 5831 right now. So we're looking at, you know, $500 gap, and over 65% of that is just because of the change in the, in the weightings. But another probably 20% is really just the 1.5 and the extra $25, and the rest is, is for the all-day K.
Also, big increase in, in, or the increase in instruction, at least, significantly due to all-day K as well.
Yep, and the, and the, I mean, the salaries, I mean, the teachers make up 70% of our staff, and that's 80% of our budget, so that's a big number for them.
The piece that we continue up at, John, and have for over a decade, has been that the state routinely has not been able to add enough to the, to the basic formula to meet the inflation rate. In the last two years, they would have beat it, even in the best of low inflationary times, the inflation rate's been going up about 1.8, 1.9% per year. So with a 1.5% increase, we are actually falling farther and farther behind in terms of if you said in dollars from three years ago, do you have as much money as you have now? There was not enough new money put on even to keep us even, so we're always basically behind the curve. And some years have been much worse. We've only had a couple of years in the last two decades where we actually were higher than inflation, which then we're typically the next years afterwards went immediately into zero as the alternative. We're just, we're just not seeing that move, and legislators, as much as I think they under, well, I'm not sure if they understand totally, but as much as they hear from us that you've got to do something to make up the difference, they're pretty much just simply trying to keep us from going too much deeper behind. We'd actually need about $2,300 per pupil added to the formula to get us back to where we were in 1993 per pupil. And I don't see that in our wildest dreams of ever seeing that happen. So this is a constant discussion going forward, will be how long we can keep going with the funding that we have, and at what point we'll have to start making additional budget reductions. Next year will be a new appropriation year, so the issue will be, when we look at that, the next biennium, we'll see where they come up in terms of numbers.
Their questions, Carrie?
Thank you, Val, and thank you for the narrative. It's really very helpful to have the narrative. I don't know if this is a question for you or for Matt or
We'll find out.
But I'm wondering about the one-time funding on the teacher evaluation, and, you know, how exactly will we use that? Is that enough? Is it overly generous? Can we spread it out over a few years?
We'll tell you after Thursday.
Okay.
The department issued a retraction today because the, one of the MDE folks said something at a meeting last week that turned out not to be true, and I don't think she went
I was at that last week, but Carrie yet her.
So there's some question of whether it can, initially, what we had heard was it would be general fund dollars and could be used to be spent on anything, you know, in terms of, because this is only being given to the non-QCOM schools, so that's an important distinction. We've done all the work, you know, to this point already, and so it's a, it's a reasonable amount of money in terms of looking forward, but the big question is can we carry it over? If we can carry it over, that might, would allow us to utilize some ongoing professional development, pay for ongoing professional development. It would allow us to invest in some of the survey tools, we're looking at different things between open source and proprietary survey tools for the student engagement component, but when we had no money, you know, that narrowed the field. So we're going to a legislative update on Thursday down in Rochester, and we'll know a lot more about what the actual intent of that funding is going to be. The key thing is the carryover. If we can carry it over, it makes a whole bunch of difference. If we have to spend it all in one year, it just doesn't, actually, that, that does not make sense, because it would, it would give us a one-shot piece, yet we'd already done, it would have been helpful last year. You know, in terms of some things that we did, but
We did all the work putting it together.
So stay tuned.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Julie?
Val, I have a question about the special education cross subsidy.
Yep.
Is that coming from federal or state?
State.
State. And how much is it? I mean, it's always great when they recognize that that's an issue, but
It's like less than 100,000, I want to say, for our particular district. The, the calculation is more complicated rather than less, which is their, their typical trend. They're now actually going to have three formulas for special education, and you get the lesser of, so instead of just
Of course.
One revenue calc. But this particular one, I want to say with 76,000 or something was my, my first run estimate.
And Val, that's of a cross subsidy of how many dollars that we typically calculate?
Um, over 2 million, I think.
So 77,000 dollars on a $2 million cross subsidy.
Yeah.
It's better than poking an eye, better than poking an eye with a sharp stick, but
We definitely take it, absolutely.
And one thing that I did forget to, to mention, there is the change, as you're probably aware, in the, the way they're calculating the referendum revenue. They switched that, so it's now calculated on adjusted pupil units instead of residents. And I actually called the guy at the state today to get a concrete answer and did not get one, which I guess I shouldn't be surprised about. For, for fiscal year 15, everything is hold harmless, you know, which he said over and over again, and I'm like, I got that down, but I'm really concerned about 16 and beyond. Everything I'm reading and looking, the way they've calculated the formulas, you know, they took what we got and said, okay, with your new adjusted pupil units, here it is in the same amount of revenue. And so my understanding is the only thing that's going to affect our revenue going forward is a forward is a change in the pupil unit, not the significant, you know, one hundred and forty gap we have between resident and adjusted. But he would not give me confirmation of that, so it's still an unknown at this point. And I really got the impression that they're still working through it and trying to figure out how that's going to play going forward.
Another good question for Tom Melcher on?
Yes. Yep. Thursday's the day, so.
Other questions?
Thank you, Val. Very thorough. I really appreciate you stepping us through budget by budget.
No problem.
All right, and I guess you want to stay at the podium because we're on to the first item for individual action, which is the proposed budget for capital and health. Is that still you?
Oh, that's right, that is me.
Yeah. You look like you were wrapping up.
I really was. I forgot about it.
You're really back up to home, no?
Yep. So that one is just exactly as I presented last time. We just, they like to get a start on the projects because once school's out, you know, they've got a really short window of time to get all their projects done. And not only all their projects for the summer, but they clean all the buildings and all the questions. And so as much as they can get a jumpstart on it, it really helps them a great deal. So we just ask that you approve it now. It is part of the general fund, you know, but it does have to be presented separately anyway, just because there's, you know, it's the restricted funding sources. But there's no changes from what I presented. It's just really enabling them to act now, to start getting that, some of that stuff rolling for July first. Are there any questions about that or?
So board members, since this is an item for individual action, I would ask that we have our most on the table before we get into discussion or questions. And so their superintendent's recommendation is to approve the proposed two thousand fourteen, fifteen operating capital and health and safety budget. Led by Carrie?
Second.
Seconded by Anne. Questions for Val? So this was what was presented on May twelfth.
Yeah.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation for the proposed budget for capital and health and safety? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. All right, we are ready to move on to our second item, which is the proposed K-12 instrumental music program realignment.
And I guess what I'd like to do tonight is to begin by giving you kind of an overview of the process that we've gone through in looking at this particular piece. And then I know Joel has some specific information in terms of the proposal. To look at this, I think we need to come back to the first of April, which was when we were notified by Dr. Jenny that he planned to retire at the end of the year. At that point, that triggered several things in terms of discussion. As part of that, we needed to think about, we have, we had six-tenths of an FTE that was open now as an elementary band opening. Because as you remember, Roger was six-tenths elementary band and four-tenths DAC, our district assessment coordinator. Beyond that, however, I think the discussion and the thinking that it triggered was taking a look at the current allocation of secondary music FTE, given that we'd already were sharing band FTE between the middle school and Sibley. And that was with Stephanie, where Stephanie basically spent part of her time at the Sibley building, part of her time at the middle school. And we knew that as we moved forward, there might be advantages of modifying that particular piece. I think we also looked at what the situation was with our current orchestra program staffing because we'd seen significant increases in participation levels over the last several years in orchestra. And so that really also became a logical part of the discussion. And so we began with a discussion of this in cabinet, first cabinet meeting after we got Roger's notice of retirement. And a subcommittee of the cabinet basically came forward and said, we'll go out and try to take a look at and think about what might be the most appropriate strategies or ways of trying to get a look at this. We know we've got a strong music program in Northfield, and we want to try to maintain that program, but we also think that anytime you have a retirement and the potential that you might want to look at, how you place people at different buildings and how you set up pieces for efficiency and effectiveness, that you need to do that when those things happen. At the same time, though, the lateness in terms of getting this started and the time it took to do some brainstorming has put us now at the end of May. And this is not a situation where we can't take some kind of action in the near future because as we go forward, if we do not take action tonight and we wait to take action until the next meeting, now we're trying to hire an additional instrumental music person sometime after the ninth of June. And so we think it's important to try to think this through, and I think the administrative members of that subcommittee really tried to look at those pieces. So if you take a look at, I think, what's coming forward, what Joel's going to share with you tonight, I think you know that we always start with the concept of how can we be responsible stewards of the community's resources. We know that as school administrators, we're required to make judgments on staffing evaluations and also staffing applications all the time. We routinely move FTE between programs and even between buildings in order to meet the needs of students and their course registration. So every year, for the entire time I've been here, we have moved staff around within buildings in terms of FTE. We've said we need less FTE in this area, more FTE in this area. We sometimes have moved FTE between middle school and high school, but vice versa, when we saw the needs in terms of the numbers of students. So this is not a new strategy in terms of saying, let's take a look at the possibilities of what the allocation should be. And we know that this means that we have had and continue to have those kinds of adjustments to program FTE at one building or another. We analyzed the process following Dr. Jenny's retirement, and we produced a recommendation, which Joel is going to share with you tonight, for additional instrumental music FTE at the secondary level. This was designed to address several things. It was designed to address staffing efficiency. And when we think about efficiency, it's the idea of, do we limit the levels that a teacher has to be in, or do we limit the amount of travel time that someone has to be in at least during the day? Now, if we're doing travel time where they're in one building on one day, another building on another day, another building on another day, there's really not a travel piece there because you come to the building and stay. But we want to try to address and limit that travel if we can. We also know that we need to address the continued growth of the orchestra program, which continues to grow. And I think finally, we need to think about equity, especially in terms of the number of ensembles that various members of the faculty are involved with and the numbers of lessons. And thinking about equity between the two instrumental music programs. So we're looking at issues around how often can there be lessons? How many students might there need to be in a lesson situation? And I guess we also believe that we can't really depend on will somebody take a private lesson or pay for a private lesson? Because if we're talking about the equality of access, we need to be able to offer the same opportunities regardless of which program it's in. The recommendation that Joel shared with you in the packet and he'll share with you tonight is one that we tried to do several things with. First of all, was to try to provide a single full-time band teacher that would cover all three elementary buildings. So instead of having what we have currently, which is Roger covering part of the buildings and Stephanie covering the third building, it would be a single person. So the strategy of efficiency, the strategy of how effective you can be because you are the program person for that level seems to make sense. As part of this, we're looking at what should the band FTE at the middle school be? And what should be the amount of time available for lesson activity? And how many students should be expected to be in a lesson together? And how often should they have a chance to meet? We know that we need to think about increased FTE for the secondary orchestra program. And we'll take a look at the chart in just a minute that kind of reflects what we saw as the situation. I think we also believe that the recommendation needed to look at trying to create a full-time middle school instrumental music position instead of having bits and pieces from different buildings. Now, we, our hope obviously is if we can, to hire a person that would provide a combination of orchestra and band in one person. The idea being if you're going out and hiring a one-point-oh FTE, your chances of actually getting quality candidates in that mode as opposed to hiring a six-tenths band and a four-tenths orchestra person, or vice versa, six-tenths orchestra, four-tenths band person, is not nearly as strong. And so we're looking at trying to do that. At the same time, we know that may not work, and we need to be able to step back if we can't do that and hire two-part-time positions. We also think a big part of this is providing greater equity and lesson availability for both band and orchestra students at the middle school and high school. And as we look at the chart, the data that we have says there's significant inequity in terms of the availability for lessons at various levels, given the FTE that's in place. And then finally, we believe that as part of this, we need to look at the option of eliminating the sixth-grade general music course if band lessons are identified as a higher priority than the sixth-grade general music. So all of those pieces were part of the mix as we tried to go through this process. When we take a look at this, obviously, the proposal that's going to be shared tonight is going to have an impact on the middle school's ability to provide the same frequency or format of lessons than it has in the past. And we know that there's great value, and I think our music staff believes there's great value in individual and small group lessons. But I think it's also important that if we're looking at that, that we're also looking at the fact that secondary instrumental students, regardless of whether they're in band or orchestra, have greater equity in terms of that access. And in the chart, as we've shared, and we'll talk a little bit about here in just a minute, there's significant differential in terms of the ability of students to access lessons, given the department, whether it's band or orchestra. I think as administrators, we have to make choices about our financial parameters. This can happen in every area. There's needs for additional sections of a particular course or staffing, where we reallocate staffing from one course to another. We have a finite amount of staffing we can work with. This is inevitable, and it happens every single school year. I think it's important, as you think about this proposal, that we reinforce the fact that all of the current secondary music staff retain their current FTE. There are no individual FTE reductions for the existing staff in this plan. So when we take a look at tonight's request, really, our goal was, I think, to share the process with you this evening. We're actually asking you for a small amount of additional FTE to put into the instrumental music program and allowing us then to post for a full-time middle school position. Because we're also able to reduce some FTE costs from the skills class at the middle school, we're actually going to only be asking for two-tenths additional FTE. And we felt that in bringing this forward, we couldn't just do that on our own. Normally, we would have made the modifications in the staffing, if there were no additional money being requested, we'd have done those and we would have informed you, we wouldn't have asked you. But we are asking because, we are asking for additional dollars because we think it makes sense. We also think that it's going to be important for you to help us to know where you want to go with this. There is some urgency in this posting because we're sitting at the twenty-seventh of May, and we need to be in a position to be able to get that posting out and get some solid idea as to who's out there that would be willing to look at the position. And we know that if we're looking at a full-time position, that's a different group of folks than if the best we have is to maintain our current program and we're simply hiring a six-tenths FTE instrumental music. So we think the proposal that we're going to be, that we're going to be sharing with you tonight makes good sense. We know that modifications in program are always painful. There are always ones that make it difficult for people, and we know that. And we understand that everybody would like to be able to say, let's keep everything the way it's always been. And we respect the fact that that's a difficult situation. But we also know that in moving forward, we've got to look at what's best for all the kids in the system and to try to think about what's the right balance of numbers. So before I turn this over to Joel, what I'd like you to do is just take a look at the chart document. And let's just take a minute so that, and hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at this before, but what you'll notice is at the top of this chart, there's information about band, high school, middle school, and elementary, how many FTE you have at each level, how many ensembles or teaching sections are in place, what kind of lesson arrangement is available for each level. And then you'll see that there's a current year and then there's a proposed, which would be what we're proposing to do if we would move with this particular proposal. And then in the final column, a proposed FTE change. So the key thing we're looking at here is with the current band numbers, which are about five-hundred-and-eleven students, we're looking at taking that, the total FTE that are assigned to that at three-point-six and moving it down to three-point-four. What we know is if we would calculate it simply on the, what percentage of eight-hundred-and-seventy-four kids that are in instrumental music are in band, that should, would calculate it out to an FTE of three-point-three. So we know that with the current FTE, we're really about three-tenths of a FTE strong if we were simply just to do the calculation by saying, what's the total number of FTE in instrumental music, which is five-point-six, and saying of that, how many would go if you had five-hundred-and-eleven out of eight-hundred-and-seventy-four kids? Does that make sense? Or did I, I'm watching eyes glaze over, so I just need to make sure. All right, so what I'm saying is you have eight-hundred-and-seventy-four kids in instrumental music, four through twelve. You have five-hundred-and-eleven that are in band, you have three-hundred-and-sixty-three that are in orchestra. So if you do the math of just saying, five-hundred-and-eleven divided by eight-seventy-four, what percentage of that total FTE should that be? It's point-five-eight. So the calculated FTE band number should be three-point-three FTE. If you take orchestra, which is three-sixty-three, the calculated amount is point-four-two, the calculated FTE for orchestra should be two-point-three. And what you have right now is band FTE at three-point-six against the calculated FTE of three-point-three. You have an orchestra FTE of two with a calculated FTE of two-point-three. Okay, does that help them? All right, so now we look over in the proposal, what you'll see is the modifications that we're talking about doing. So the modifications really are to maintain the high school band as-is. We're talking about the reduction in the middle school from one-point-seven to one-point-four. We're looking at, basically, looking at a similar number We're looking at, basically, looking at a similar number of, as far as rotation in terms of lessons. And we're looking at the elementary FTE of going from .9 up to 1.0 because at that point, Stephanie is really responsible for all three buildings and all the elements of the elementary orchestra. So, the overall proposed change is a minus two tenths of an FTE in terms of the band side. In terms of the orchestra side, we're moving up from .4 to .8. So, we're looking at an increase at the high school of .4. We're going from the fact that the lesson arrangement in orchestra, there were no lessons at the high school. This would allow them to do individual lessons at the high school level, similar to what we can do per band. We would then look at a .8 FTE for orchestra at the middle school level, which would be, would be two tenths of Heather's position, which keeps Heather at 1.0, and basically hires a .6 FTE for orchestra. And again, leaves Natalie at the elementary with 1.0 as the full-time elementary orchestra teacher for all three schools. So, what you're seeing, basically, is in the chart, that we are moving to a closer balance between orchestra at the high school and the middle school, realizing again that the middle school band numbers are still significantly higher. And we're looking at trying to address getting the elementary band to come online and be even with the elementary orchestra. That we're trying to look at addressing the ability to give lessons in an equal way across both buildings, and across all three levels. So, the churning was just, it's another way of looking at this, but it's a way of looking at it and looking at the mathematics behind, where do FTE numbers come from? What I'd like to do at this point is to ask Joel to talk about the proposed realignment and also the work that was done by that committee to put together the proposals that's being recommended.
And I think I would draw additional attention, as Chris already has, to the notion of fiscal responsibility. Sometimes that's the least favorite part of my job because as we look at what's going on in orchestra, I think that as a district administrative team, we would love the opportunity just to say, "You know what? We put more money there. We put more staffing there because there's growth there." The reality is that whether it be music or any other program across our K-12 curriculum, we do have a finite number of resources to channel in that direction. So, you could have programs that are vibrant and not necessarily growing as heavily as another program, and we do have to do that massage. And so, when we were looking at this, the growth in orchestra, which is just a really exciting reality in our community, Chris, as a good, fiscally responsible parent, would, looks at us and says, "Well, what are you willing to do without?" And that's a common refrain amongst budgetary conversations that we have, and from staffing to other types of financial allocations. If we're going to increase expenditure here, what are we willing to do without on another side? And so, as we began the conversation to look at how to solve this good problem of increased enrollment and on the orchestra side of things, we actually began with a much more conservative approach and said, "How do we work within the confines of our current staffing to create a model that works toward that equity and works toward trying to establish across the instrumental music programs, a consistency of opportunity, regardless of whether students are on the orchestra or the band side, middle school, high school?" What we found with that cost-neutral piece was we essentially were taking the one problem and moving it to the other program. So, you're solving it here. And it was kind of like the whack-a-mole game that you see, one would pop up and we'd solve that one, and something else would pop up. And that was when our subcommittee went back to Chris and said, "We really feel like we need to look at a model that at least incorporates some additional FTE." And that was really where, around the district administrative table, the conversation came up about the skills class that's taught in the media, by the middle, middle school media specialist, which is quite unrelated to music. It just so happens that it creates another opportunity that Amy's shifting roles and responsibilities and her work free up our classes she has taught that can essentially dissolve. And students will be channeled into other elective choices that they've made, but it frees up that point, too. So, we began talking about, "Well, what could we do in terms of working toward equity, working toward balance, assisting with the increased growth in orchestra, and again, trying to keep that fiscally responsible piece, but also acknowledging that a cost-neutral solution really wasn't a solution." So, that's where we come to the request that's outlined in the document that I created for you, as well as the chart that's attached, that essentially asks the board to consider a .2 increase in our staffing, our 612, or well, truly, our 412 music staffing allocation. The .2, we're really looking to increase by a .4. The .2 is essentially reabsorbed in that skills piece that will then reinvent itself as music FTE. So, we're looking for new dollars to fund the additional .2 that will get us to this model that's described here.
So, board members, this is an item of individual action, so in order to have discussion and questions, we need a motion on the table of some sort. Noel, do you have a motion?
I will.
So, you moved the superintendent's recommendation-
Yes.
-to approve, okay, the proposed realignment. Okay. Do you have a motion on the table to support the superintendent's recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. All right. Questions? Rob?
Well, first of all, I have trouble, since this was the first time it was presented to us, to go straight to a motion without any time for discussion or questions first because then we're just kind of stuck with this motion and there's no, I mean, I don't know if there's a possibility to change it.
No, you voted down.
You can vote it down.
Well, then, the position we're in now is that we either vote to take FTE from the middle school, which I have trouble with, so we could vote, I could vote against it on that grounds, but then I'm voting against actually authorizing .2 more FTE for the music program, which I would like to be able to do. So, it's down if I do or down if I don't. I can't vote for this wholeheartedly in either case. My, I've got a lot of problems with the realignment part of it. I'm fine with the additional FTE part of it. So, part of my problem is just the process. We got a long, very instructive email from Mr. Fryer where he says, "No one ever asked me to explain or defend our current staffing." It was apparent, he was apparently not involved at all in coming up with this proposal. There was an email in response from Mr. Lear that says, "That is true. He was not part of the process." We wanted to be as objective as possible and not to pit one program against another, but that's the effect of this because you are pitting middle school band against orchestra. And there's no way around that you're taking something from middle school band and giving it to someone else. And so, I don't think that that's a productive way of going about this because you're going to get, you're going to be pitting people against each other, and you're going to be pitting the band teachers who are losing this FTE against the administration who are swooping in and saying, "This is how we're going to do it," without consulting people. So, I have problems with that. I mean, there was the letter from Mr. Fryer, and then the response from Mr. Lear. As far as I could tell from the recipients of that email, Mr. Fryer was not one of the recipients. So, he wrote something to everybody, but then he didn't get the response, as far as I know. Did you send it to him?
I did not.
Okay. So, he raises objections. There's not even the communication of saying to him, this is, you know, there's no communication back and forth with the actual teachers who are being affected by this. So, I have that problem with it. I mean, I, you were talking about the, just using a mathematical formula to find the percentage of the FTE. I just looked at the number of students in programs that would have a, that currently have a full-time to one FTE, and it comes out to about a ratio of 14 students to one teacher. So, for each tenth of a FTE, that's what's the current staffing level. If you did that, if you followed that, you could actually come up with a proposal that isn't much different from this, where you would have 1.5 for band instead of 1.4 for middle school band, with the elimination of the general music, which has been talked about, and just shifting the high school orchestra from 1.8 down to 1.8, I mean, from .8 to .7. That would be more in line with the 14 to 1 ratio. And, you know, I went in and I talked to Mr. Fryer and I said, "Well, when I look at the numbers, you could come up with this kind of a proposal." And I said, "Well, that looks a lot better, and it's still, you know, 6.0." And maybe there are objections to that from the administrative point of view, but, you know, if you actually talk to the teachers who understand the facts on the ground and they understand how the music lessons work and how many woodwind players you can put into a group lesson as opposed to having these string players, all of these things, music professionals know these things, administrators maybe can guess at them, but they don't know the real facts. So, I just have a hard time voting for this proposal that had no input at all from the people who actually know how music programs work and what the requirements are for a thriving music program. And we talk about orchestra, the numbers have been growing, but you would like the band to continue to stay healthy, and it's, and there've been cuts from it in the past. And, you know, if you keep cutting from it, at some point, the band program is not going to be as thriving if you keep taking FTE away from it. And then you're going to say, "Well, the band program isn't as good as the orchestra program," whatever. Then you really are pitting people against each other. So, I mean, but again, because we have a motion here that's to take both of these parts, I have trouble supporting it.
John?
I guess, my concern is similar to Rob's, and I seconded the motion just so we get out of the discussion. But if these numbers are correct, and the calculated FTE for band is 3.5, and the calculated FTE for orchestra is 2.5, why aren't we aiming for that? Why not add a halftime to the middle school band and a halftime to the, to the middle school orchestra and achieve the numbers that you say would be accurate and have equity rather than build in inequity and greater bias towards the orchestra program than the band program?
Sure. And that's a fair question. And the numbers you're referring to in terms of Chris's statistical breakdown would assume that both programs are identical. And even Ethan, in the conversation that he and I have had, we've talked about some of the fundamental differences between orchestra instruction and band instruction, the number of instruments, the fact that, you know, here at the high school, we have two ensembles. And with the growth in the high school, the, we're reaching a point where we're going to need to carefully consider a third ensemble, which in all of the other disciplines, it would be an automatic .6. There wouldn't be a discussion of a .5 because you can't, you can't teach a full-year section of something with a .1. So, it really boils down to, yes, if you have, you know, if you're looking at U.S. history to early American history or civics, we can work much more closely with a specific number and divide 54 into 46, or divide 54% and 46% and come up with a general FTE. But I think the tendencies for the instrumental music programs to be, to be different in a case of how many, how many students are needed to fill out an orchestra or a band, and then the Congress of that, at what point to do both tip to an additional section. Those types of things make them, you know, at least at some level, different from one another. And so, it is a little bit, it can be misleading if we work strictly from the percentage of this many students triggers this FTE and so on. Because then you, then you end up with, you know, essentially, kind of a statement that says that, both in terms of individual lessons and ensemble, that both function identically, and they really don't.
And I understand there's different issues in terms of disciplines, and I certainly don't have the musical talent of Mr. McWilliams, so I wouldn't weigh in on that. But in terms of, if what we're looking for is equity, and this is what would be equitable, why are we looking at a 30% increase in orchestra and then, at the same time, a reduction of, you know, to FTE in bands? If, or .2 FTE for band, why not look for the numbers that really are equitable, even though, as you say, there's some difference in disciplines, difference in the way things might work out? Why not still try to achieve that equity rather than prepare for a future of something that may or may not come to pass?
All right. Currently, at the, again, at the middle school level, we have 1.7 FTE. And so, if we're looking at adjusting in the year in terms of saying, "What should be the right balance of FTE?" You know, John, you mentioned the concept of .5, .5. The, again, the issue is, if it's lessons, probably that's a doable way to attack it. If it's ensembles or it's actual bands or orchestra ensembles, you can't, they need to meet every day, all through the year, so they need to be a two-tenths of an FTE because it's one period a day. So, the concept of what you're saying, of saying, "Okay, make the 3.4, 3.5, and the 2.6, 2.5," so that you have it exactly to the calculation, doesn't work because as administrators, as people are trying to sit down and say, "Can I get all the sections of activity in?" is difficult, except in the lessons, where we might be able to do some things around that piece. The other thing, obviously, what we were trying to do is, if we look at it right now, overall, we have 5.6 FTE of music right now. We're proposing 6.0 FTE of music, but obviously, we're proposing shifting more of the FTE over to orchestra so that we get equity in terms of programming. And that equity, as I understand, Joel, especially at the secondary level, is in terms of what kind of lesson structure is available-
Correct.
-for students. Because as I understand right now, there are no lessons at the high school.
Right. We have a .4 teacher teaching two ensembles.
So, the ability to even do, I mean, the ability to even do lessons at the high school doesn't exist with the FTE that we have in place right now. So, if we're going to try to provide greater equity so that students have equal access to lessons regardless of whether they're in orchestra or band, we've got to do something to FTE in orchestra that could provide that equity. And, you know, Joel is right. You know, I started them out with, you know, "Can you do anything without increasing the amount of FTE?" Because we've been very cautious in terms of FTE increases over the years. You just heard from Val in terms of us looking at overall FTE and the amount of our budget that funds the salary and benefits for teaching staff. And obviously, they're the backbone of the operation in terms of our school district. But what I think we started with was saying, "Could we do that without making any additions at all?" We stepped back and said, "That doesn't look workable because then we'd actually have to draw more away from band in order to get that balance out." And so, at that point, that's why we added FTE in terms of the request of .2. And actually, it was .4, but we had the ability to pull back the .2 from a class that we were no longer going to teach. I mean, going forward, the, I think the issue that we're facing right now is being able to identify a position to post. able to identify a position to post. And if we're going to go forward, I see we have two options. If this is voted down, which is fine if the, the board is not comfortable with this proposal, then my sense is the only position we can post would be a point six elementary position. And we'd let Stephanie continue to be in one building, and then in, in middle school, we, we put the other building in, the other person in two buildings, we'd leave everything the way it is. But if we do that, we have a real inequity in terms of the amount of staffing we have for orchestra, not only for ensembles and, and, but also in terms of the ability to do lessons. And I really would like to see if there's a way that we can at least get closer to providing that equity between the two programs. Are we going to be perfect? No, I don't think we are. But I also would say that we're, and I agree with you, Rob, a hundred percent, the, the people that understand the detail of, of what I can do in my lesson or whatever is not myself. Joel is our, is our all-state trumpeter. But basically, I know that the, the people that are out there in the audience are the people that are the ones that can really say, "How many people can I put together in a lesson? How many lessons should I have, you know, in a month or in a cycle or whatever?" But I believe that the administrators are the ones that have to sit down and say, "This is all the FTE we have to work with, and this isn't just Solomon cutting the baby in half. This is, this is cutting the entire chunk of the FTE into all the pieces that support all the various programs." And I think the proposal that the subcommittee came forward with is one that, that tries to address those pieces in terms of expanding the FTE in orchestra, getting a, a better balance in terms of the ability to do ensembles and lessons. And the, the impact that we know is, is of concern is the reduction from one point seven to one point four in terms of the FTE, the middle school, which we also may be able to do some, do some addressing with if we look at the placement of the general music class, which could in fact add back some, some FTE that would be available for band. And in talking with Greg, Greg doesn't say, "It would be easy," but he says, "I think, I think we can do that if that's what people believe we need to do." So, I mean, we have some flexibility to do things, but I guess what I'd share with you tonight is, and, and I understand that, you know, we had to come to you later than we would have wanted to do this. I don't know how we could have come to you any sooner and had a chance to really think about and try to lay out the options. It, it is just a, an issue of when you start out not having an opening until after the first of April, and you're proving that retirement, our ability to decide what to do and go forward is limited in terms of time. And I think when people are trying to also address what's right and what's equitable, I would rather have had the administrators do what they did, which is take more time to try to get it figured out. And I absolutely understand the, the concern from music staff who are saying, you know, "Could you come to me and talk to me about what might be possible?" But I also know, and as Joel shared with the board members in, in the response, we do know that it has the potential to pit one group against another, and it may do it anyway. So what I, I, I would say to you, gee, I'd love to give you a simple answer that would, would make everybody happy. I'm not sure if there is a simple answer to this one that makes everybody happy.
Other questions?
Well, I appreciate you guys articulating the, the issue here because it, it is obviously more than what you can, what you were able to put on paper and all the different situations and scenarios it presents. And I do have a couple of questions. Is it then pretty much standard practice that at the high school, both at band and orchestra, that kids have individual lessons and then they group them in middle school as, as you point here?
Has it been standard practice across the instrument?
Yeah, but that's just how it's done, and it's like, high school kids get individual lessons and then middle school kids are just grouped.
Um, not necessarily. Mary has been able to structure a system at the high school with the band where individual lessons have, have been the, the typical. On the orchestra side, it hasn't been the case, at least in the time that I've been here. I mean, Heather's been here for five years. She did, you know, kind of piece together some lessons before after school. As a traveling teacher, it, it really became, I guess I would call it self-preservation that the last couple of years she hasn't been able to do that. So it has not been a norm on the, the, on the high school side. At the elementary, or excuse me, at the second, at the middle school level, it's been a, a mix of small groups, larger groups, and in some cases, individual lessons, and some of that depends on scheduling. So it's, you know, if, if particular students aren't available during a particular hour, or if they, you know, because of instrumentation or other pieces, it can, if there's a range between that, I don't know, would you be able to speak historically in terms of philosophically what the intent was? Because you're kind of getting a more philosophical approach to middle school versus high school, is that correct? Or have I?
Well, I, yeah, I'm just wondering if, I realize that orchestra has not had the opportunity for weekly individual lessons, but I know at the band at the high school, they have, and they've been able to group them at the middle school. So I was just wondering why at the high school it had the tendency to be more individual and then at the middle school it is more common practice, as it appears here that they are grouped.
Sure.
And then what the change would be then, because, because you're saying on, on the grid that it would be a six-day rotation at the middle school for band lessons, but it doesn't indicate number of students, and I imagine that's just because you can't quite get a handle on that, and would it be around four, that's current practice, or would that number increase substantially?
It would increase, and essentially, the, as you look at, as you look at the differential in terms of staffing for a band moving from this to next year with this proposal at the middle school and a similar examination of the staffing proposal for, for orchestra, it would attempt to bring those two processes in line. So when we talk about equity, it's about ensemble pieces or a number of ensembles, but it's also about how those types of, of the lesson arrangements are, are able to execute themselves on both sides. So in, you know, as an example, when we were talking initially about, about band and orchestra and how, how to essentially solve the problem of, of the lesson piece at the high school, as soon as you, you take what Mary is doing with her one point oh in terms of weekly individual lessons, as soon as you start tampering with that, that goes away. And as soon as you start adding on the orchestra side, that comes into play. So it's really, if you, if you were to look at, at the high school orchestra as a separate staffing kind of question, there's really no way, it becomes almost an unsolvable problem because if you're trying to solve it in orchestra with, with FTE that's already there, it's moving from one, one organization to the other and essentially handcuffs one while providing that opportunity. So it would really have to be almost a tag team where Mary and Heather would trade back and forth in order to accomplish that, where this model it kind of attempts to at the secondary level, both middle school and high school, to bring that into alignment. So students are, are getting the same type of opportunity, both ensemble-wise and, and lesson-wise at both buildings. At least that was the intent.
Okay. And then my second question, you talked about the growth of orchestra, and I'm just wondering if you can talk over the, the previous couple of years where you don't show on the grid where orchestra was and then where it is today, and then where you have on the chart, current and proposed, you show the same numbers for orchestra. So is that just, so if you talk about the growth, you have the one eighteen with question marks, is that because you're anticipating then that there would be more students than, than the one eighteen that?
Where do I have question marks? I'm sorry.
And all of them in terms of the proposed numbers for next year?
Oh, I see.
I was trying to understand where the growth in terms of numbers.
That's the, we think that's the number.
Right, right. The number, the number, the, the, the numbers that are there, so the question marks represent, the numbers that are there are essentially the numbers for enrollment for, for this, for the fourteen, fifteen school year. A little bit misleading, and Chris and I were, were, Chris worked to, to clean up my...
Mathematized an English major.
Right, my attempt at, at a similar chart. So I recognize that that's misleading. If, if you're looking for, I, I would go with a kind of a point in time. I believe it's four years ago. I don't have those numbers in front of me that I, I can certainly share with you if you would like them at a later point. But four years ago, we were working with a high school number right around sixty in terms of the number of, of students, nine twelve in the orchestra program. So that would be a four-year growth pattern to the, to the ninety-nine that is represented there. And the ninety-nine is representative of, of the fourteen, fifteen school year, so the school year that is to come.
So then there isn't, so then you're not projecting, or there isn't any, because those registrations have already occurred, correct?
Correct, yeah, exactly.
So there isn't growth then between this current year and the next school year?
Well, what I'm saying is that when, when we move the, the chart, I would have to go get for you the accurate numbers from this last year because these, the numbers that you see are representative of the fourteen, fifteen. So, so I would just, if you, if you're thinking about that term, it's a single point in time for fourteen, fifteen, and the retrospective numbers, I would have to get for you, those are on a separate document.
Okay.
And that was part of the, a little bit of a confusion when Chris and I were transferring the data from one chart to a, a more readable chart.
So, so you're not projecting flat?
Correct.
This is?
Exactly.
The, the accurate numbers in the proposed, how?
Right, and the correct numbers are?
The other numbers, just I pushed it back over to the
Correct.
The current because I didn't have any other number to put in.
Can I just clarify my understanding of this? The current is, if we didn't change anything for fourteen, fifteen, these are the students that we would have, and these are the FTE that we would have for, for, for the fourteen, fifteen. So it's current means, current if nothing changed for fourteen, fifteen.
Correct.
Proposed is what we would like to change for fourteen, fifteen. So the student numbers don't change.
Exactly.
The proposed is the change to the FTE, not the change to the student.
Yeah, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Does that? Exactly, that was throwing me off.
And, and again, it, it, all that would happen there is we would go out and try to, try to hire a six-tenths band person and we'd leave everything else the same. But when you do that, then you end up with, with a four-tenths FTE orchestra person who is able to do no lessons at all. And you're, you're basically looking at a significantly longer rotation at the middle school in order to do those numbers. But obviously, that, if we want to look at, at the simplest way, you know, I mean, we could have come at this the simplest way, and the simplest way would have said, "Yeah, just leave everything as is, we'll go hire another six-tenths person." But I think anytime you have a retirement, you need to think about the FTE across K-12 and decide, "Are there better ways to put this together?" And I think that's what, what Joel and Nancy and others who worked on this have tried to think about is, is there a better way to put this together that says, "With a reasonably similar amount of FTE, get a better balance in terms of the ability to, to provide direct instruction for ensembles and the ability to provide lessons to students?" Because right now, we are not anywhere near equitable in terms of the support for orchestra.
Joel?
I've got a bunch of notes here, I will find my way to thread through them in a logical order. Thanks for all the hard work on this and to everybody. To me, statistical equity is difficult for me to consider on this issue. And I believe there's a component that hasn't been considered here, and I'd put more teaching staff into a growing program than into a continuing program, especially when the growing program seems to be in the younger students. And I say that not because I've got skill at, at, at music, but as a manager of fifteen years, I spent a considerable amount of time training the new and young engineers and trying to inspire them to be the best they could be, a whole lot more time than I did with the engineers that were continuing. So I'd say, I'd support this proposal because I think we need to move on also and get on, get on with it.
Other questions or comments?
Sure. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So what I was hearing before from you, Joel, that it's point two per kind of ensemble, is that?
Right, right.
And that's why the, when you were answering John's question of why the, mathematically the point, shifting to point one would work but not. So what I was confused about, how could middle school lessons have even happened at orchestra if it's, if there's three ensembles and it's point two, point two, point two?
I missed the first part of that question.
Oh, if it's point two per ensemble is generally how you do an FTE. So orchestra at the middle school is at point six, and there were still lessons, so that, that tells me there's, there's still some wiggle room?
Because they've been ruining gold days, so in the early days, they're doing it every other day.
And that's the same at, and band too then? That it's every other day?
Correct, yeah.
And at high school, it's every day?
Exactly, yeah.
And then what, I can understand how this might look to a student or parent of an orchestra student, what the change might look like, but I don't, don't think I quite, it would just, if I was a band parent with a middle schooler, my student would still have the same number of lessons, there would be more students in the lesson, is that how I would see this change?
I think you could see it in two potential changes. You could have more students in a given lesson on a similar repetition schedule, or you could also have, I forget what I just said, more students per lesson, or you could also spread them apart further. So, you know, one of the strategies that, that initially, when Heather was, was doing lessons, she was doing one a quarter at the high school specifically, and she was, you know, bringing them in before school, or she would return from the middle school after her middle school duty hours, and students would, would do after-school lessons. And that's actually a strategy that Mary has employed quite frequently on, you know, a school day where lessons occur before school, during school, and after school. So that's not unheard of certainly at, at either building. So I think it could take whichever, whichever form, I think, that ultimately the instructors deemed was the most effective and efficient means of delivering that instruction in those, those small group lessons.
And then my last question was just a point of confusion. The point two that you're talking about with the music appreciation class, or I can't remember which one it was called?
The general music class.
So that is, and you said the, I don't remember if it was you, Dr. Richardson or Joel, that that potentially could be in the band FTE, or is that?
Right now, it's
It currently is.
Ethan teaches the general music class.
And what Greg?
And that's, and it's, it's, is it two-tenths? Is it?
Right.
Because it's every day? So the, the idea would be if we moved general music out of, either out totally, or we looked at where else do we shift it, then you open up more band time. Because then, then you've expanded the FTE of band by two-tenths if band is not responsible for general music.
Right, you freed up Ethan to do lessons.
You know, the, the two alternatives there are, you say, "Is there anyone else in the music department that could take on general music for two-tenths?" Or you say, "We've got all these opportunities for orchestra, band, and chorus, do we need to not do general music because we have enough other electives that kids will have plenty of other things that they can do during the periods when they can get it to go back?"
So does that mean that the one point seven was really a one point five that got allocated to band, or is that a one point not, you know, I'm not, I'm trying to look at the current?
That would mean that the bottom, well, what that would mean is, yeah, the one point seven reflects a one point five ensemble and lessons and a point two general music. And so what the, that proposal, what that piece in play would mean would be, the one point four would remain, but the one point four would be all ensemble lesson, and so it'd essentially be a downshift of a point one in terms of a specific to ensemble and lesson.
Okay. Thank you.
And while that may seem strange that we just start talking about dissolving classes, the reality is that occurs six, twelve in countless scenarios. You know, one that's, that's specific to my building is that we, over the last two years, have run an overage in number of students who want to get into the fax program. And last year, we had, we had students demand enough to run a one point three, we ran a one point oh, simply because of, there were some timing pieces. enough to run a 1.3. We ran a 1.0 simply because there were some timing pieces and there were just, and we, so we moved students to alternates. Jeff has that system actually even wrapped up a little more, where students have a number of alternatives that they select, and really those alternatives are filled based on how the schedule works best. So here, we, it's not backwards from what he's doing necessarily, or a reverse of what he's doing necessarily, but here, the students' demands in the registration process much more actively drive little nuances of the schedule like that. At the middle school, the building of the schedule, availability of teachers, availability of courses, is much more in play. So there are, you know, even as recently as, a few weeks ago, Jeff and I were having a conversation about shared staff. And he said, well, I could take a .1 business, I could take a .1 IT, and I could take a .1 FACS. And in my brain, I have no idea how that's possible, but the way the schedule is built with Greg and Jeff at the helm, it's just, it's a much more fluid piece that they can move within those departments because the students are all selecting classes in a way that says, I'm picking nine classes. Ultimately, I'm going to have seven, but I picked nine classes and I'm interested in taking, and then so that we can make a workable schedule.
It's just the difference between high school and middle schools. At high school, is much more student-driven in terms of the selection of classes. At the middle school, if you think about it, most of the classes, the kids are not picking. Electives is a much smaller portion of the total number. So, you know, again, the thinking here is that even within the option we're sharing, there's some twist to it. At the same time, we need, we need some direction from you in terms of the FTE piece as to what we should go at. And, you know, and please understand, if your comfort level is not here and you're saying, I'm not ready to do this, we vote this down, we go out and we post for .6 FTE music. But understand, you're going to be coming back within the year trying to think about how to try to address the significant inequity in terms of the orchestra program. And we honestly don't have enough FTE to simply just add all the FTE we need to create everything that needs to happen in the orchestra to make it equal to the band program. And so, but I also don't, I don't want you to make a decision that you're not comfortable with, even though as a board, sometimes that's what you have to do.
John?
Is the expectation, if you were to change the music, is that there would be no general music class at the middle school, or just there would be a different faculty member who would be teaching the general music class?
My understanding from Greg is that both of those options would be something he would look at. In our conversation at the end of last week, Greg gave me the impression that the dissolution of that section of the course would schedule-wise be easier, or he'd be able to pull that off. I think he had to go back and research in terms of interplay of how the schedule is built. The middle school has specific places where they put, quote-unquote, "all of the electives." So it's not, you know, my electives are all over the place. His are in specific hours. So it would be a matter of the availability of particular staff that are qualified to teach those courses. But my understanding as of last week, both options would be possible. It was just that the dissolution struck Greg, at least on first blush, as being more doable than the shift. And I think that had to do with where the teachers are locked in schedule-wise.
Julie?
So just to clarify, when the middle school students enrolled for this coming school year, electives, they would have to have done like choice one, two, or three. And so general music, if they had chosen that, would have fallen into choice one, two, or three.
Correct.
What typically are the section sizes been for kids who choose to take general music? Do you have any idea?
Well, and that's part of the nuance that, again, that I struggle over getting my brain around as a high school scheduler, because I think Jeff's answer would be, we fill them. So it's literally about getting students into places where he can maximize the efficiency of the schedule by filling all of the classes he offers. So in my school day, if you walk down Industrial Tech wing, you'll come across classes of 14, 15, 16, because we don't have an effort to say, well, we're going to take these kids from foods and put them into engineering, or from business management and put them into world language. At the middle school, there's a much broader effort to be as maximally efficient. And that's where I think the message from the beginning is, you know, students here are the classes, we want you to select as choices. Here, they're making requests and they have alternatives. So there's clearly a delineation between, these are the ones I really want, and these are the classes I'll be willing to take if I can't get all of those. And that process does play out, obviously. Those of you that have had high school kids know that there are conflicts that are irreconcilable. At the middle school, they're really about choice one, you know, preference one, preference two, preference three, so they can really interplay with any of those. So the music classes are going to be as full as the FACS classes, as full as the Industrial Tech, because he maximizes enrollment in those classes.
Can't we just ask Ethan, what's your, what's your class?
We could do that, too.
Usually, usually between 20 and 25.
So in some cases, that was that, that's students' number one choice, but in another case, it might have been their number three choice. But the intent is just to fill a section so that it's, you know, a 20-plus section.
Yeah, I just, I thought it was just simpler, just get them, that's what's... So here's the other thing you may run, Saj. If you want to, you could also look at amending this proposal to basically give us the ability to eliminate the general music class for this coming year. And that would let you know that then the FTE for band would remain at 3.6 in terms of real FTE, or available FTE that really teaches band and not general music. How much would that be? That's another twist, that would be another twist. It doesn't change the increase that we have to do in terms of additional FTE, but would open up the option on that end.
Rob?
How much, if you did that, what would the impact be on the middle school? I mean, what would the total FTE for middle school band be?
Well, it would actually, it would be at 1.4. But as we said right now, if we're playing out the actual numbers, if Ethan keeps general music, actually, only eight tenths of his FTE goes toward band plus another four tenths. So you actually have 1.2. If we basically are okay with general music being eliminated, then it's a true 1.4 with all of it going toward either band instruction or lesson instruction. It might be a way to help support the shifting.
Carrie?
Do we have to do that? Can we leave that to Mr. Delano to decide whether it's possible for the choir teacher to take that general music or something like that? Do we have to, you know, because my understanding right now, if I have this right, is that 1.5 FTE are currently devoted to band. And understanding that that's .2 of Mr. Frye's time is devoted to general music.
Correct.
And Mr. Delano's saying that he could take that .2 and either not fill that section or use someone else to teach that section. But in any event, what we would be doing is going from 1.5 FTE that's devoted to band to a 1.4 that is devoted to band.
Correct.
Leaving the general music decision to the administrator of that building.
Correct. And understanding that, you know, this was a conversation in the hallway as opposed to looking at the matrix, so...
Yes, but it could go either way.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I guess I'm reluctant to hamstring the middle, personally, I'd like to see general music still be offered, but I am also uncomfortable with the, I mean, it's very helpful to understand that the actual reduction to the band, dedicated band time is a .1, not the .3.
Sure.
But I personally would be reluctant to.
So Carrie, you're saying that you'd want it to be that, we would want that the band would no longer be taking that general music, though? But leave the rest of it to Mr. Delano as to who teaches it or whether it's taught? Yes?
Well, I guess I would, sorry, but I agree with Carrie that there should be a general music class in the middle school. And I think that I do support adding six tenths or four tenths to the music program. So yes, I would just support the motion as is, hope that we can find a way to work out that there is, there are sufficient resources for the middle school band or general music class and for the orchestra. I don't like the way this was presented to us in the last minute, saying, you have to deal with this now and accept this as it is. And yes, I am okay with doing this based on the conversation we had tonight, that we looked at, that we had this conversation and figured response out, but we don't need it.
And I, you know, I apologize for the fact that I didn't, I have not figured out a way we could have gotten it to you any sooner. The timing to get it done was what it was. And I, as you know, that's not the way we typically operate. We always try to give multiple opportunities and time to move through a process. But it is one of those pieces that there are, some of those elements are out of our control. And the one element is when the resignation comes in. The second element is, you can, you can take additional time to process this. But if you do, the demon on the other side, or the devil in the details on the other side, is you significantly reduce the ability to find potential staff to hire. And I honestly, John, did not want to go in and simply say, no, we're just going to just hire another six-tenths FTE, or seven, excuse me, six-tenths FTE elementary music and leave everything else the way it was. I didn't think that was the right move to make, given what we know about the inequity that we're seeing between the two programs.
So I have one more question. I know that we're trying to round this down. So in terms of the Plan B, this is, you were talking about the, I think it might have been in your email, Joel, about the hire and the skill set. And so one of the things that Robert said bothered him was just not having the music teachers involved in a, in terms of the hire, it's going to be a unique person if it's a one person, but it may end up being two different people. And I would assume that the teaching staff would be able to help with advising on hires in terms of...
Absolutely. They can intermark that process.
Because, I mean, this, you know, being able to know that Mr. Frye thinks that person can teach band is probably pretty important.
Absolutely. Without a doubt.
Okay.
Noel?
I call a question.
Okay. All right. So, all those in favor of approving the motion? No?
You want to ask for approval?
Of the question?
To the question.
Okay.
To stop the, to discontinue the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to ask for, Noel called the question, so I'm going to ask for approval that we move forward.
Can we discontinue the discussion?
Discontinue this discussion and report.
Those in favor say aye.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And now we have a motion on the table to approve the superintendent's recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Noel Call, Fossum?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Hardy?
No.
Stratton?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. We are ready to move on to the consent grouping. I'll remind board members that there was a very big list of personnel items added to the consent grouping in your table file. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? All those that are in, asked for motion to approve the consent grouping. They're moved by Julie, seconded by John. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have items for information. We have three because we had one added in the table file. So the first item for information is the next fiscal year board, school board meeting schedule that was included. Anything you want to say about it?
We just are following the traditional pattern that we've used in the past, where then two meetings a month, except in December, June, and July.
Upcoming dates, remind board members, this Friday is the Area Learning Center graduation at Longfellow at one, and then commencement. And you should have received a letter on your, on your table file or on the table about where to show up on Sunday. Let's hope the weather's nice.
Yeah.
And then our third item that was added in your table file, is the closed negotiation strategy session. Remind board members, or actually, not remind, this is news to us, that there will be a closed negotiation strategy following the first meeting in Jim, the only meeting in Jim, actually, June night. With that, with that, we have our two future meetings coming up, one in June and one in July. And I know, board members, if you have vacation, just a reminder to let myself and DeMita know. So with that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move adjourn.